Okay, it's 12 o'clock. We'll call the meeting order. And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Rule call?
I would just start by saying the meeting was properly posted.
Meeting was properly posted.
Is that per diem sheet going around?
Do all the new people know how to sign up for the, know about the per diem sheet?
They did it last. From District 1, Bytlake.
Present.
District 2, Strouda.
Present.
District 3, Gady.
Present.
District 4, Walliser. District 4, Walliser.
Kevin, you online?
District 5, Kilmer. District 6, Bedrudy. District 7, Slack. District 8, Egan. District 9, Olson. She's still gone. District 10, Easterday. He did say he was coming. District 11, Jacobson. District 12, Henry. District 13, Taylor. District 13, Taylor. District 14, Lawler. District 15, Schweiger. District 16, Wilson. District 17, Muller. District 18, Sullivan. District 19, Stanek. District 10, Easterday.
Are there any board members online?
Allison, or Kevin Walliser, or Martha Olson?
Need a motion to excuse Walliser, Olson, and Taylor. Lawler, or?
John.
John and Lawler.
John, Wilson.
And I guess we have a presentation by Land and Water about our situation with the dams.
Thank you all so much for joining us. Mark Erickson and I will be presenting what we know so far, and we are honored to have Mr. Steve Becker join us as well. So we are talking about the dams. Everyone knows that. That's why we're here. We're going to go over this term, the preferred alternative. I almost titled this presentation, "Our Dam Issues," but I decided to stick with preferred alternative. That's a concept we're going to wrap our heads around. Anyone who says this is being rushed hasn't been dealing with this since August 28th of 2018. It does not exactly feel rushed, and in fact, just these things really take time. It has been a long time coming, and I do want to take a minute to thank many people to get to this point, particularly Steve Becker, who I feel like has gotten a bit of criticism, but if you see the work he has had to go through to complete this environmental impact statement and to respond to all of these questions, it is significant, and we are very fortunate that Steve Becker has donated so much of his life to Vernon County and their dams. Another big thank you to Justin Olson with NRCS, in my opinion, probably the greatest district conservationist ever, at least to be part of Vernon County, and we appreciate you. A great thank you to Cassie for her support and for so quickly learning about all of our dam issues and for your guidance. Thank you, Cassie. Will, Frank, Mary, the LCC Committee, definitely Lauren as well, and many of you other committee members. Thank you for your time. Will and Frank in particular have dealt with dam issues for a very, very long time, seen some ups and downs. I also do want to thank Matt and Monique, who began their careers with land and water, and now are department heads themselves, and through their past knowledge and current roles have been very supportive and have a very good forward vision on where we're heading. And then finally, I have to absolutely thank my entire land and water department. They can say Ben Woyan doesn't know a damn thing, but he can sure put a team together. Definitely Mark, Sarah, Casey, Marty, Nick, Kenny, Sammer, and even Deverne deserve a massive thank you as well. So now enough gushing and love fest. We have some good news and some bad news. The bad news is that what the preferred alternative really means is the majority of the dams in the West Fork of the Kikapoo and the dams in the Coon Creek watershed are going to be decommissioned if we go with the preferred alternative. The one exception to that is Jersey Valley. That's the one that they have determined after this $2 million, very lengthy study, that Jersey Valley does meet the cost-benefit analysis to be replaced. The other dams do not. There are downsides to removing the dams. The dams have had benefits. The dams have flood reduction. There will be property owners, one way or another, affected no matter what the decision is. No one will be happy. Congratulations, welcome to being on the county board. Someone will be angry no matter what decision we all make. But with this preferred alternative, typically, we would be offered maybe 50% at most, 75% to do this work. Steve Becker has worked very hard to make sure they made a variance, I believe it's called, so we will be offered 100% to do the majority of this work. There's slight caveats to that, which we'll get into in detail in the presentation. I do not expect, in the future, to be offered more than 100%. If anyone in this room thinks we will someday be offered more than 100%, please explain how. But for us to go forward with this preferred alternative is to almost get 100% covered on the decommissioning of the dams in the West Fork of the Kikapoo and the Coon Creek, and the vast majority of Jersey Valley paid for. So it's the preferred alternative. I would challenge that. A lot of the other alternatives are not really alternatives. They have been compared. There's been cost-benefit analysis. Vernon County can take on all these dams without federal assistance, and we can be on the hook for that ourselves. I do not want to burden future Vernon County. So that's why I do strongly encourage we move forward with the dam preferred alternative. Today's a discussion, the actual decision, I believe, we'll bring to you in June. That is a quick introduction, quick, you can debate if it was quick or not, about what the dam preferred alternative is. At the computer. Also, again, at the computer. Some of this will be a summary, some of this will be detailed, but federal government recommends the majority of the dams will be decommissioned. Again, for Vernon County, there are nine dams in the West Fork of the Kikapoo. That does include Jersey Valley, correct? And in Coon Creek, there are five dams. And to be clear, we are not talking about dams in the Bad Axe watershed. So not Sidi Hollow, Rung Hollow, Duck Egg. There's some, there's some more. Those are probably the ones you're more familiar with. Those were not part of the study. We did not have the dams breached there. But many of you may receive questions about, so they're ripping out Sidi Hollow, so they're taking out Rung Hollow. No, that is not the case. Those PL566 dams are not part of this discussion, and our assumption is we will continue to operate and maintain those dams, at least until we're done with the West Fork and the Coon Creek. Mark, are you okay with going ahead?
Hi, everyone. So thanks, Ben, for that intro. I guess I'm just going to kind of back up at first here and look at a little bit of the decisions that the study was based on. First of all, storm events have intensified. We're seeing higher rainfall amounts. And these dams were designed with rainfall data from the 1930s through the 1960s. So hydrologically, these dams aren't big enough. Their capacities aren't big enough to pass the 100-year storm through the principal spillway pipes, which results in more auxiliary spillway flow. These auxiliary spillways, these grass ramps that we have on a lot of the dams are designed to be only for emergency situations. And with our increased rainfall storms, we're seeing them flow way more frequently and do more damage when they do flow. A lot of the dams that have breached, we think, have eaten back through the auxiliary spillway and then started tearing, tearing away at the abutment of the dam. This dam right here is Dollin Dam down in Coon Creek. In the 2018 storm, we had about five or six spillways flow like this. So the big thing is, is, you know, if we, if we think, well, let's just fix these dams, it's, it's more like building a new dam because the pipes are too small. The top of the dam might have to be higher to hold back these bigger storm events. The National Weather Service and NRCS have come up with new rainfall totals for our area. That means hydrologically, they're not big enough. The other big issue is the sandstone abutments. These dams were built against these sandstone layers. When you think about Vernon County, we've got some sand on the top. Like up by Verocle here, we've got a cap of sandstone on the highest points. Then typically, we've got about 100 to 120 feet of limestone, but then sandstone underneath of it. The base of these dams are down by the creeks where that sandstone is evident. A lot of times when you drive up and down the town roads, you'll see the sand, you know, outcroppings. And that sand is very friable. It's subject to piping. When the pool fills up on the upstream side of these dams, that pressure's got to go somewhere. It goes through that sandstone. We've got four or five dams that we monitor. The lower side of them have drains where this flow is going through that sand, coming out the lower side of the dam. And it's, it's somewhat alarming when you see that flow, when you've got a full, full pool of water above the dam. Any repair that you would do, we'd have to address this sandstone problem, and that's the most expensive part. That's the part that prices these dams out of any cost-benefit ratio. The other thing is we've got just aging infrastructure. We've went through all the pipes with, we documented all the joints and the cracks in the pipes. Some are in really good shape, but some are pretty bad. Some are leaking. They've got cracks like this. This one's on the bottom. You can see cracks on the top where water's seeping in. So any repair would mean replacing the pipe as well. We kind of touched on this early. This is just a slide of Jersey after it breached. It's just to show the scale of, and how that fractured sandstone bedrock ate away in a matter of about six hours. We figured it was about 80,000 yards of material that washed out. Here again is just another flow. This was the Jacobson Dam, or Ostrom Dam, sorry. This one, the whole dam overtopped. So you can see that this grass spillway was flowing, and it actually overtopped the whole berm. So that spillway is about three, four feet deep at the top. The pipe was flowing full, the spillway was flowing full. They couldn't keep up, and it overtopped the entire dam. That also happened at Millsa Dam, which was the one that washed out. So again, just evidence that hydrologically, these things aren't big enough. So as Ben mentioned, this preferred alternative, part of the study is recommend the decommission of the Coon Creek dams. There's their names. If you see on the map, they're located kind of north and east of Wesby up there. There's five of them in a cluster. Monroe County has seven Coon Creek dams, and La Crosse County has two. Total of 14. Typically, our dams in the Coon Creek are pretty small. It'd be pretty easy to remove. There's two of them. One specifically with very hard access to get to. We maintain about a mile and a half of road just to get to the dam, multiple creek crossings. The estimated sponsor, we call the sponsor, these dams were built in cooperation between the Soil Conservation Service and Vernon County. Vernon County was the local sponsor. Again, if we decommission or doing repairs, we're the sponsor. For Coon Creek, it's approximately $32,000 that we would be on the hook for. I think this number's just very vague at this point. We, we, we can't assume anything until we, you know, make our decisions to move forward or not, and then until we get a design plan ready and until we get bids. But again, with the feds paying 100%, we are basically paying for permit fees and for land right acquisitions, as well as easement relinquishment. We have multiple easements for the dams when they were built, and if we are going to remove them, we would likely quitclaim those easements back to the original landowners. Oh, the West Fork of the Kikapoo, there's the dams that would be decommissioned there. There's eight of them. Jersey Valley isn't on this list if we keep that one separate for our discussion right now. And then a little bit, then I'll touch base on the Jersey Valley repair. So you can see, there's quite a list of them there and on your map, you know, they're in the West Fork of the Kikapoo, west, or east of Wesby and east of Verocle there. Little bit bigger dams in the West Fork. You know, none of them are the size of Rung Hollow or Duck Egg, but like Yitri Primmer is a pretty good-sized dam. Hidden Valley and Seas Branch are pretty good size. I think, you know, when we talk about dam size, I think in the back of my mind, what's the watershed above this dam? So like Yitri Primmer, I think, is the biggest one. It's got about 5,000 to 6,000 acres that drain to it. For comparison, Rung Hollow in the Bad Axe has 19,000 acres that drain to it. The little ones like Ostrom and Jacobson there, you know, about 1,000 acres that drain to those smaller dams. And that's pretty common for the Coon Creek ones as well. Decommissioning the West Fork, the sponsor share is approximately 80,000. Yep? Yeah, good point. So.
Could you just, for my clarification, what's the Clinker agreement till 9/21? What does that mean?
Yeah, so Clinkner was repaired in 2002. It started, and it got done in 2005. That set in motion a new 100-year operation and maintenance agreement with the federal government. So if we choose, you know, we could keep that one and keep it under the federal agreement. There are some issues, though, with the internal piping on that dam. There's, there's some pretty good cracks. And also, when it does overflow, it's got a rock. It's called an articulated block mat. And when it flows over that auxiliary articulated block spillway, it washes all the fines out, and it's kind of proven to be a maintenance headache. I guess this is the portion where I'm going to turn it back over to Ben, and then at the end, we can certainly both entertain questions.
Thank you, Mark. So to emphasize, I know it's tough, right, that these are estimates. We're never going to get away from that, right? Then, once we make, this board makes the decision to move forward with the preferred alternative, then the engineering costs are funded at 100%. Without that design, yes, it is an estimate. And then until we get bids, qualified bids, from contractors on the design, it's still an estimate. And then until that work is actually completed, it's still an estimate. So that's hard, right? That's unfortunate, but it is the way the world works. Fortunately, we have so much covered by the federal government. And then we haven't mentioned, but additional portions, very likely can't be a guarantee, additional portions to be covered by the state under the municipal dam grant program, which we have been very successful at obtaining for other projects. I don't know if that makes, puts your mind at ease or not. Hopefully, a little bit. Mark is personally promising he'll get all the money for it, right? He does a really good job, and the staff does too. It's not promising, but promising to try. And we've been very successful at that, as I believe our committee and this board has seen before. We have received a lot of public comments. Very recently, we've received these public comments, Friday, actually. So it's like one document with 65 pages, and I read through the whole thing. And they're important, and we will make sure we get those out into your hands so you have an opportunity to see that. A lot of it was responding to state and federal agencies. But a lot of landowners submitted comments as well. And with Jersey Valley in particular, I think there's definitely people very, very in favor of replacing Jersey Valley and people not as in favor. From what I saw, there was more in favor than not in favor. Approximately $18.6 million would be coming into the county, which absolutely provides work for contractors, and that's quite a bit of economic activity. Historically, Jersey Valley was a very popular lake and beach. Remembering that Vernon County has almost no lakes and beaches except for the ones that the dams have created. So it's unique, and they've, they've done enough economic analysis to know that Jersey Valley had that value and that it meets the cost-benefit analysis to replace, whereas the other dams didn't, but the other dams did not have that recreational benefit. So estimated construction of 18.6 million. And our sponsor share is estimated at 465,000. The dams, the municipal dams grant could certainly cover that remaining amount. We also have every reason to believe some of that will be our in-kind contributions. It will be a lot of Mark's time, a lot of my time, a lot of Sarah's time, and the rest of the staff, regardless that that will be the truth. So some of that is incorporated into the 465,000. But again, that's an estimate. If this county board decides to go forward with the preferred alternative, that sets in motion the engineering, the design, and the securing of the funding for Vernon County. Steve can confirm or deny this later, but my understanding is going forward with the preferred alternative now does not mean we're absolutely locked into everything. Decisions can be changed, and we did hand out a timeline, and we're going to only go over four points specifically of the timeline. Right now, Jersey Valley construction is looking at more like 2029, I believe. So patience is a virtue, y'all. Again, 100% for engineering, construction costs for flood prevention, and 100% of the engineering for public recreation. So where Vernon County's cost share really comes in is the 50% of construction for the purpose of recreation. So they're determining the vast majority of the dam is for flood mitigation, and that will be at 100%. Well, you can't have that top 50% of recreation without having the dam already. So fortunately, they're viewing it that way, which will cover the vast majority of the dam under flood prevention. So the vast majority at 100%, Vernon County's share is because of that 50% portion that's for recreation, not for flood prevention. I don't know if we did a slide. Oh, yeah, point at the computer. Nope. Also, fortunately, for all recreational facilities associated with redoing Jersey Valley will also be cost shared at 50%. That's very significant, right? Can include trails, can include certainly bathrooms, pavilions. That will be part of an overall design, trying to identify what parking needs are, what kind of traffic count will be likely there. That's just a side bonus that I consider very significant. They're not just paying for the decommissioning and for the majority of the dam. They'll also be paying 50% of the recreational facilities to rebuild that park at Jersey Valley. So you have a pretty, at the computer, you have a pretty in-depth timeline, and a lot of it's just super boring for you. So we picked seven, or four things, but we didn't number them the same way that they're numbered on your sheet. And for the county board to make the decision in June and sign the watershed agreement, the estimated time is very soon, June of 2024. I'm sure we could delay that. That just delays everything else. And I see zero benefit in delaying the preferred alternative decision. Final plan revision and approve for dam decommissioning, February 2026. Sponsor awarded construction contract for dam decommissioning is between August 2026 and December 2027. Final plan revised and approved for Jersey Valley dam, April 2027. That'll sneak right up on us, by the way. And sponsor-led construction, and really, construction for Jersey Valley. We're in that probably late 2028, early 2029. This is the estimated timeline. Will, so far, has everything always gone on time?
No. Anything you can imagine, change orders, school.
Estimated timeline. I think overall, that's the majority of the presentation. I think there, there are landowners who are going to be unhappy no matter what. I lose sleep over this, and I'm not happy about that. We will lose some flood reduction capacity. We lose sleep over this. We are not happy about this. There have been some saying, you're removing these dams and you're not doing anything else. That I will take issue with, because we are. We, with the support of our land conservation committee and the county board and seeking more funding, we have increased staff and capacity. We just hosted a couple of scientists from Thriving Earth Exchange this weekend. They had a great time. They use their big science brains to help do watershed mapping and things like that, and they're going to keep doing that. We have great partnerships with NRCS, with DATCAP, with DNR. And, and then we have our watershed groups who are forming and being very active. Ultimately, a lot of this relies on the private landowners in Vernon County, on the farmers. We have very great farmers here. We just need to do more of what we've already been doing. That takes time. That takes capacity. I have. doing. That takes time. That takes capacity. I have lots of ideas if this county board wants to support that, including you guys could let Phil and I split an engineer, just saying, that would greatly speed things along, having an engineer on staff. Some, some counties do that and it would be very wise and move things along. There are things Vernon County can do, but having giant, expensive, long-term dams is not what I would advise Vernon County to do anymore. That's where we're at. I strongly encourage the support of the preferred alternative. And I strongly encourage you to ask Mark Erickson the toughest questions you can think of right now. Mark, I believe this one's for you.
Okay. So if you go back historically, these dams were put in to control flooding. So we're decommissioning them out and I understand all of that. What happens when we get a flooding event? What happens to Coon Valley, Coon Valley downtown? And how do we help them? How do we prepare for that? Because we know it's not an if, it's just a matter of when. And if there isn't anything holding back the water anymore, what's going to happen to their park, their bridge, their baseball field, on and on and on? So I'm just, these questions have been posed to me and I'm just, I wonder the same thing.
They're legit questions and we don't have always the best answers. I, Coon Valley's park was not really protected with or without the dams, from what I've seen historically. As I said, there, there will be impacts and downsides to not having the dams. And I'm not trying to gloss over that at all. It'll come up quicker. It will come down quicker than when the dams were there. There will not be the impact of that wall of water from the dams breaching all at once, which is probably more of an impact than if there were no dams at all. Again, lands, land management, the best practices possible on the farms with the landowners, holding as much land back, as much water back onto the land as we possibly can. And that's, I mean, I promise to not stop trying. I know my team and staff promise to not stop trying. I don't know if I've bragged on Justin Olson enough yet, but I guarantee he won't stop trying. Luckily, he's in Monroe County too, so he can stop some a bit before it even gets here. It's not a perfect answer, Mary. There's a downside. All I can promise is to lose sleep over it and that we keep marching along, doing the work we're doing to hold as much water on the landscape. Do you want to include anything?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this will hinge too on the fact that, you know, I think Monroe County is in general, pretty on board with dam removal. So their dams are coming out. And our five in Coon Creek are very small. They're in one tributary of Coon Creek. I don't see a big impact at Coon Valley. And as a matter of fact, in the study, they looked at if all the dams in the Coon Creek were out, it affected the height of the bridge by six inches in Coon Valley. So if we just say our five, I mean, it would be a matter of maybe an inch. We're too far below our dams to really have a big effect in Coon Valley.
Can you say more on, so, so there's an agronomist whose work I follow and he's got a line about when someone asks me how much rain I got, I say all of it. His whole thing is keeping water on his farm. So the dam's gone and trying to incentivize private landowners to keep the water on their property. Can you go into a little bit more on how we incentivize that? I drive around the county a lot and with the reduction in the dairy industry, we don't see much contour strips with hay anymore. That's huge for water penetration. You don't see terraces much anymore. You don't see retention pods anymore. So what's the plan then to convince that 6,000 acres upstream from the dam to start managing things in a way that maybe the dam loss isn't so impactful?
I thank you in advance, Mr. Slack, for your support because you queued it up greatly. I can give presentations that'll be way more fun than this one about some of those ideas. I love your emphasis. We worked hard for contour strips this year, didn't we, on the county farm? Small battles, unfortunately, I have to learn to be happy with. We are not a regulatory county, nor do I want to be. We focus on the economics. The farmer-led watershed groups are ideal because it's farmers hearing from farmers on what are working. The Wallisters have an amazing story about their 1,500 acres of cover crops and turning relatively poor soil and some of the best tilth garden soil practically in a year with a little bit of cover crops and manure. Kenny Anderson's our technician, who we triumphantly stole from Richland County with 27 years of experience, one of the nicest fellows you'll ever meet. And he designed and installed six dams this year. That's a lot for one person to do. We need like two per every 80 acres in Vernon County, I'm not going to lie to you. So the more capacity we're given with staff directly equals more federal funding leveraged to do these practices. Outreach and education, relying on our watershed groups and our brilliant farmers to work together, an expansion of the farmland preservation program, just because that gives a direct tax incentive for folks to work with us. Soil health, turn your soil into a sponge, not into concrete, right? And though there's real economic ways of doing that. Buffer the landscape, perennialize the landscape economically when, whenever possible, are a couple of ideas. We have increased our staff, which took a long time and took support from them. But if, if we design it, if we have people to design, permit, oversee construction, Justin will fund it pretty, pretty much. I mean, that is essentially the equip program and through NRCS is almost unlimited funding. The limit, the bottleneck, is the technician capacity. So we're interviewing tomorrow also for another staff, doing everything we can to increase capacity and, and do a lot more of what works. I'm not telling you it'll be enough anytime soon.
Let's get the word out to farmers.
Yep, getting the word out to farmers, for sure. I appreciate that question, though, and I think that needs to be an ongoing discussion.
Yeah, as a farmer of sorts that lives in the upper end of the West Fork, below the mills and the dam that is now gone. I had had a question and I probably will find this out as time goes along through our committee. But for the benefit of everybody here, you mentioned the Clinkner Dam, which I also live below. I was up there when they repaired that dam quite a few times, watching what they were doing up there and it all looked good. I guess my question is, if we were to keep the Clinkner Dam intact, how much repair, would it take a lot to keep it? Or is it okay the way it is? Or would we have to throw a lot of money into it in repairs just to keep it there?
Yeah, that's a good point. We touched a little bit on that Clinkner Dam. Basically, the pipes are separated, like the second and third joint from the upstream side. So I think in order to repair it, we could either put an internal band in it. That might be more of a temporary, you know, repair that we maintain and we check, or dig down, try to fit them pipes back together tighter. That'd be a good question for Steve, too, is, you know, if the county decides to, you know, keep that dam and we uphold our, you know, we got about 100 more years or 90 more years of operation and maintenance agreement, you know, I'm assuming that they'll be there then to uphold their end of that bargain with us. So yeah, you could definitely choose to do that one. It makes, if any of it makes sense, it's that one because it's still tied under the O and M agreement.
Allison, are you online?
Just to respond to Frank one more time. That being said, Clinkner is almost like the only one we could consider. I don't see a strong reason to keep it. I, I would still believe we should just probably decommission Clinkner as well. And a lot of this is just thinking about future Vernon County. Clinkner doesn't have a huge amount of storage capacity, right? So its impact is, I would say, almost less than most of our other dams for what it's capable of storing. Just because of the timing and the repair is why we have almost 100-year agreement on it still. But I would not advise to keep Clinkner either for, for these same reasons, to not burden future Vernon County with those costs, even if they're further down the line.
That kind of brings up another point is that the township guys down there, they said that after the repair at Clinkner, they basically, the road washed away worse than ever, right? So Clinkner was designed a PMP, probable maximum precipitation at the time. And it's basically a glorified culvert. It's hard to build a dam to stop that 14-inch rain event and still do good during the 20-year events, the 30, 40, 50-year events. So that's, that's another thing we see at Clinkner. It's got a four-foot pipe and a lot of dams the same size only have about a three-foot pipe. So they wanted the water to get through because they planned for the big storm, but yet it doesn't stop the little storms very well.
I'm going to show my ignorance. Who is the chief? They saw referred to this as the chief. Explain to me who the chief is.
I'm assuming that's chief of USDA?
Yeah. Okay. I didn't know if this was Native American or if it was...
Secretary of Agriculture chief.
Yes, nobody knows. Okay.
Sure, NRCS. Terry Crosby. Well, it might not be the same person all the time.
Is that a position that's held him?
It's a position.
It's like, it's a position that's held, I don't know why, if it's actually called chief or if you guys are calling him chief or what, but it could, it could change with promotions or resignations. And this is a multi-year plan and the person that's the chief now might not be chief next week, so.
I believe of the Department of NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service within
I just had a question. Coon Valley, if, when they get hit again, it'll be that, kind of that northern, 25% of that community is going to get hit again. Are they in concern or should they be concerned with, for instance, flood insurance, things of that nature? Are their rates going to go up? Or has there been any study with regards to impact on communities and their ability to protect themselves through insurance rates, things of that nature?
I'm not going to answer beyond my level of awareness. Decommissioning the dams will not impact it. Part of the prefer, will not impact the flood insurance rates. Part of the preferred alternative plan is approximately $300,000 to do remapping after the dams had been decommissioned because, right, that does impact the breach route and the flood plane. But as far as flood insurance, if Matt wants to answer that question, but nothing about decommissioning these dams will impact flood insurance rates. The maps will change and remapping will be necessary.
And I, when I asked that, not only rates, but even getting access, access to it, could they be just canceled out? We will not sell you insurance. You're saying that you're protect, these people are protected?
We continue to have good compliance with the flood insurance program through the work that is done. So I don't think so.
No, FEMA is required to offer them insurance. So it's not like they can lock them out. We don't know how many, you know, I don't, I don't remember how many properties or, you know, how many acreage, acres are going to be in, added in, you know? And that's why we're asking Steve to remap those flood planes because, you know, we want an accurate assessment of that. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Monique Casman. I work here at Vernon County as the GIS coordinator, the Land Information Officer. And I just wanted to follow up on what Matt from the zoning department had mentioned. It does state in the plan on page 38 for the Coon Creek Watershed Project and on page 39 of the West Fork Kickapoo Watershed Project that, I quote, "After decommissioning all dams, FEMA flood insurance rates will no longer be accurate. The maps may be revised with a letter of map revision." That's cited in section 3.33. Given that the decommissioning of dams in both Coon Creek and the West Fork watersheds will definitively impact the accuracy of FEMA's flood insurance rate maps as stated in the plans, which is the basis in essence for community flood plain management regulations, flood insurance requirements, building suitability, et cetera. It's imperative that we make efforts to correct the maps that we have and include them in the plan EIS incorporated into the watershed agreements. It's my understanding at this time that it's not in the draft, but perhaps it's going to be making its way into the final version. It's important for us to request this information. I believe most of the county were working with 2012 FEMA firm maps. So that is, you know, at this time, depending on your perspective, a bit dated. But if we were to have outlined in the plan, the details of the, the process of that, as well as the cost, the timeline for the FEMA firm revisions, what it would do is it would acknowledge the need for flood map amendments. It would also help us identify responsibility. Who is responsible for the cost of that? As we know that, that's quite an undertaking. Integrating that request into the official documentation would additionally ensure continuation for us to be working with accurate, up-to-date data that meets, if not exceeds, criteria for data integrity, our reliability and trustworthiness that the Land Information Office tries to provide to the public, particularly when we're making data, data-driven decisions. I know that Steve had quoted 100,000 at the January 18th meeting to be allocated to the Coon Creek remapping. I hadn't heard if Mr. Becker is going to be allocating any funds for the remapping of the West Fork. And my follow-up question would be, if there is a commitment for that, would they plan to work with the Wisconsin DNR, who has been, I believe, since 2019, has been working on updating the flood maps in the Kickapoo watershed, if, if there's any coordination between the two organizations? Thank you.
So yeah, it needs to be remapped. And that level of detail, if you guys really need it, great, we can work directly with Steve Becker. But for the purposes of this meeting, it needs to be remapped. And there will be some funding available with the preferred alternative.
Steve Becker's online? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the issue of flood plain mapping just for a minute to add some clarity. Some additional information is, will be built into the final plan PEIS documents. So the draft didn't state the issue as clear as it needed to be. So the flood, the, the original mapping for the flood insurance program did not include the attenuation of the 14 dams in the Coon Creek watershed or the nine dams in the West Fork Kickapoo. In other words, when they were doing the hydraulic analysis for the flood plain map for the flood insurance program... for the flood insurance program, they did not include the storage benefits of the dam. I'm not sure why they didn't. Part of it was probably because they had a fifty-year service life originally, or economic evaluation period, and so the reliability of the dams was one issue. I believe the second issue was because the dams only control about twenty-seven percent of the watershed in Coon Creek, for example, and it just wasn't substantial enough to account for that in the hydraulic analysis. And so the floodplain mapping down through Coon Valley will remain unchanged because it was never mapped with the dams to start with. There is one exception, within the direct vicinity of the dams themselves, that's classified as Zone A, which is, there's no assignment of base flood elevation in those areas, it's more of an artistic estimation of where the floodplain is in and around the pool, reservoir area of the dam. The NRCS has set aside a hundred thousand dollars in the Coon Creek watershed and two hundred thousand dollars in the West Fork Kickapoo watershed to remap Zone A within the vicinity of the dams. But from the dams downstream, the remaining watershed all the way down to, you know, Liberty and Chaysburg will remain unaffected.
Go to the back, Matt.
So to piggyback on Steve's point, around AE zones, around villages and cities and whatnot is called, considered an AE zone, so it's studied. So that's where he's saying it's going to be unchanged. Around the dams, some of those dams have pools modeled into them. So, you know, around the dams, they're taking into account that storage. So it kind of piggybacks on Steve's point, that some of those dams have the pool or the flood storage modeled into them.
Wade? So I'm new, so a little bit of background here. My understanding is that the dams aren't going to be fully removed, because that would be more expensive than rebuilding them, so we're cutting a V notch in them if we're decommissioning them, right? Okay. And that notch is supposed to allow up to a hundred-year events worth of flow without any impoundment, is that correct?
So the hundred-year storm is supposed to be held back by the dam and passed through the principal spillway pipe. And then anything above and beyond that goes over the auxiliary spillway.
After the notch has been cut, we're talking about?
Oh, sorry. So when you, when we notch and remove the dam, we're going to make the valley notch wide enough to pass the hundred-year storm. Like on Millsna, we went above and beyond, we wanted it bigger. I anticipate that they'll be bigger under Steve's, he can weigh in on this, too, but, yeah, we want to be able to pass the hundred-year storm through the valley, essentially not have any obstruction of a dam there.
And so in the event that we exceed a hundred-year storm, which is not all that uncommon anymore, what, what sort of engineering is in place to handle that? Does the county, you know, hold on to any liability if those dams were then to breach in that kind of event?
Yeah, it kind of brings up a point, is we're going to have, you know, we're going to have a site that's sort of disturbed in the valley setting, and we're going to go in there and do work, and we're going to try our best to stabilize it. We're running the Guinea Pay right now is Millsna Dam. We're going to see how that goes, but it's going to be a challenge to get a site stable and to, you know, feel comfortable with our final product and be able to walk away is the end goal. So that's, that'll be all part of individual design basis, dam by dam.
Not a lot of guarantees here, Wade, as far as, especially once we get well beyond the hundred-year flood. But our goal is to decommission with that V, make it as stable as possible. So, you know, our last dam might not look exactly like our first decommissioned dam.